In work, amen. Please join me in the salute to the flag. Our Father.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Roll call.
Counselor Scott?
Here.
Counselor Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow? Counselor Drinkwater?
Here.
Counselor Getche?
Here.
Counselor Janess?
Here.
Counselor Leahy?
Here.
Counselor Mercier?
Here.
Counselor Noon?
Here.
Counselor Robinson?
Here.
Counselor Rook?
Are there any memorials, Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for Joyce Ann Collins Burgess, a lifelong resident of Lowell who spent the majority of her life in the Swede Village section of the city. Joyce was a member of the Lowell High School class of 1960 where she was a girl officer entering from the Sacred Heart School. She was a member of the Sacred Heart Parish from the time she was a child until its closing in 2004. During those years, she served as a member of the Sedality Parish Council Choir as a lector, CCD teacher, CCD and CYO coordinator. Joyce enjoyed singing in many a parish production. In addition to serving for many years as the Sacred Heart School Secretary, Joyce worked for the Lowell Public Schools in several different positions before finding herself as the clerk at the Le Blank and the Merklin Elementary Schools until her retirement in 2009. After her retirement, she was often called back into service to fill in for a clerk who needed to be out for extended periods of time. She has touched the lives of many children throughout the city of Lowell in one capacity or another for many years. Joyce is a current member of the Immaculate Conception Parish and a proud member of the Ladies Ancient Otter of Hibernians, of which she served in every office leading up to president, which she served as for 14 years. For the last several years, she has also served the Ladies Ancient Otter of Hibernians on the state level, most recently serving as president of the Massachusetts Chapter. From the girls who grew up together through all stages of their lives and still remain close, to the bowling babes who don't bowl anymore but still get together, to the three Musketeers ready for an adventure, to her very special friends Sheila Connie and Dottie. To Joyce loved life and lived every moment to the fullest. She is survived by her loving husband, Charles E. Burgess, with whom she celebrated her 60th wedding anniversary this past September 3rd. Her three sons, William C. Burgess, Thomas C. Burgess, and Michael Burgess, and her daughter Barbara A. Burgess. She was a beloved Nana, nanny to Caitlin, Brittany, Allison, William, Christopher, and Brian, and her great-grandson Grayson. She was the grandmother to Erin and Mary and great-grandmother to Ciara. She will be truly missed. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for Camille Butch Fratiani, born in the Senneville section of the city, is the only child who attended St. Michael's School and then Lowell High School, graduating in the class of 1961. While at Lowell High School, Butch excelled in athletics, running track, but it was on the football field where he had the most success. Butch was a four-year letterman in football. In his senior season, Butch was voted MVP of the Lowell Lawrence Thanksgiving Day Game and then voted All-American by the Sporting News All Under Legendary Coach Ray Riddick. He was inducted into the Lowell High School Hall of Fame, class of 2000. After high school, Butch enlisted in the United States Army with his best friend Paul Case and served for four years. Following his discharge from the Army, Butch moved home to Lowell where he met and married the love of his life, Mary A. May McGodle, for 51 years. Butch had various careers, most memorably at FaZe Way Trucking Company for 17 years, followed by Raytheon's, before retiring from the city of Lowell as a health inspector with the Inspection Service Department in his younger years. Butch was involved with the famous Lowell Highland Players. He was also a founding member of Lowell Pop Warner Football. He also enjoyed coaching. He was a founding member of the Owl Diner Charities for over 30 years. Butch was a devoted husband and loving, caring father. As a grandfather, he was deeply involved with his two grandsons' athletics. Butch had many lifelong friends, far too many to mention by name. He enjoyed countless good times at the Owl Diner. Butch is survived by his wife, Mary May Fratiani, his son, Jason, his wife Sue, his daughter, Amy Lynn Fratiani, and two grandsons, Jack and Max Fratiani. We offer our sincere sympathy to his family, relatives, and many friends. And I'd like to also offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for all those who passed away since our last city council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Thank you so much.
Counselor Rook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to follow up on Counselor Mercier's moment of silence dedication to Butch Fratiani. You know, Butch was somebody that absolutely loved the city of Lowell. He followed the city in all aspects, whether it be politics or sports, youth, and things like that. You know, what I can say about Butch growing up and being friends with his son is that he never missed a game that his kids played in. He never missed a game that his grandsons played in. You know, he loved all Lowell kids, always asked how they were doing, but not as much as his two grandsons, Max and Jack. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. I'd like to offer a moment of silence for Richard R. Rick Jeffroy, 74 years old, lifelong resident of Lowell, Mass. Died peacefully on December 22nd, surrounded by his loving family. He was the beloved husband of Deborah Lamb Jeffroy, of whom he celebrated 49 years of marriage. Born in Lowell, June 14th, 1948, he was the son of the late Leo and Mary Jeffroy. He attended St. Margaret's School, graduated from Lowell High School, class of 1966. After graduation, he began working in the family business. Jeffroy's Garage, located in the Highlands of Lowell upon their father's passing, he took the reins with his two brothers. Shortly after, he had met, took the reins, he met Deborah at Lowell High School and they married in May 13th, 1973. In addition to his wife, he is survived by his son, Christopher Jeffroy, with wife Melissa and their two children, Tyler and Nora of Bradford, Mass. A brother-in-law, Gilbert J. Lamb. Sister-in-law, Barbara Cormier Jeffroy. Niece, Robin Jeffroy. Nephew, David Jeffroy, Lowell Police Officer, and his wife Sherri. And nephew, Michael Jeffroy, and his wife Alyssa. He is preceded by his two brothers, James and Joseph Jeffroy. Anybody who lives in Lowell and went to the Highlands probably stopped in their service station at one time in their life. They were just remarkable men, always there to help the neighborhood and help anybody else that they could. Richard will be sorely missed in addition with his brothers. Thank you.
Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chambers in memory of Angel Perez of Lowell, who passed away on December 26th. Angel was known by many as the mayor of Market Street. He was always quick with a smile and a "hey, how are you?" to anyone who was lucky enough to catch him outside on Market Street. Angel was the son of Giorgio and Benina Perez. He was born July 29th, 1947, in Patias, Puerto Rico, and was a graduate of Lowell High School. Angel was the kind of guy who would help anyone with anything, particularly if it was a car that needed fixing. Angel is survived by his children, Mary Lou Rushing and her husband Rick of Texas, Michael Perez of Nashua, and Michael Degree of Lowell, as well as his former wife Carmen Perez of Lowell, his stepchildren Alberto Mediana and his wife Idalia of Methuen, Stephen Medina of Lowell, and Stephanie Mediana, and her husband Johan Hernandez of Texas. His beloved children and great-grandchildren, his siblings Pedro Perez, Carmen Martinez, and Idalia Martinez, all of Lowell, as well as many friends, including his best friends, Andrew Jacobson and Chris Dory. He was also predeceased by his brother David Perez. His passing will leave a great hole in the heart of Market Street, as well as all of Lowell and beyond. May he rest in peace.
Dim the lights. Two mayors' business. Communication, remote Zoom participation, motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Robinson, seconded by Counselor Noon. All in favor, say aye. Three, City Clerk, 3.1, minutes of the Parks and Recreation Subcommittee, December 20th, City Council Regular Meeting, December 20th, for acceptance. Motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Janess, seconded by Counselor Leahy. We're going to skip over the general public hearings at 7:00 and we're going to move on to five. Communications from the City Manager, motion. Motion A, response, Citizens Advisory Committee. Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Through you to the managers, actually, to the interim superintendent. Thank you for the report, Superintendent Golden. Report is, this is concerning the Citizen Advisory Committee that was started back in December of 2020. You know, I'm happy to see some work being done because I see this is important, the work of this committee, work to assist, you know, in community outreach effort between the police and the community. And it's also, I think, as important as well as to really, to enhance community, police community liaison by serving as liaison between the police and department. I see some of the thing that been discussed or advocated by the committee, such as the implementation of the body camera and, you know, the hiring and recruitment process, practice. What, and there was discussion around transparency, innovation, education, and safety. What I have not seen and like to hear from the chief is that the, you know, this committee has been formed almost two years now, and how often they meet? Is there any report at all we can look to and to see what some of the other work that they have done or have not done? And what's their makeup? It seemed like the members is going away, you know, running away maybe, should I say? You have only a couple of this committee still around, and is it something we should do better in term of to recruit or to retain them? Chief?
Chief Counselor?
I believe HR had posted the openings for the advisory committee. Some of the members that were the original eight, their terms had expired and they decided to leave the committee. You know, there was some downtime this summer, that there was some meetings that they took some time off over the course of the summer. People were away and there was only a few members left in the committee. And I know they've been publishing and trying to get some new members on the committee. We've spoken with a couple. I know Michelle Rivera, who was on the committee, and myself, I actually spoke with Pastor Nijem from the Christian Community Fellowship Church, and we have some clergy that were interested in being on the committee. The issue for some people is they're not city residents, and the ordinance required them to be city residents. I know Michelle had a clergy member as well, that, but they weren't a city resident. So we're trying, we have two people, I think, that, there were four originally that put in to get on the committee and only two are still interested. So through the HR and the manager's office, we'll be interviewing those two and hopefully adding two people to the committee as well in the next few weeks. You know, it's a challenge, like everything, trying to, you know, recruit people to come in and volunteer their time. We do when things are good. We meet once a month with the Citizens Advisory Committee. Hopefully, we try to do that in person. It's better than virtual. And that's what we had strived for when the committee was at the fullest. I think we had eight out of a potential nine. There's nine that should be on the committee per the ordinance. You know, there's two, I think, two from the high school, that would be juniors or seniors in high school. One from Middlesex, one from the university clergy member, business community, two other community members from the city as well. It's just difficult to get people to volunteer. And I know Mary Ann Manzi, research and development, that she's been, they've been posting along with Mary Calery and trying to recruit people to come in. So hopefully, we'll start with two and continue to post and continue to try to recruit members to the committee.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate your response. So, is there, we're talking about a number of, should we have a stack kind of code that way, you know, numbers don't really load up at the same time?
So, you know, because I think that the committee was started several years ago and there were two-year and one-year terms, I think everyone started at once, and that's why when the terms ended, it all ended. So that, you know, we weren't filtering people in, you know, after a year or two that they weren't staggered because we, it was a new process. So hopefully, you know, we can get a few in now and then, you know, keep filtering people in. And when they're at other people's terms, we'll get more of a rotation in terms of people coming into the committee. And again, you know, the hope is to get some people to volunteer. We'll hopefully try to reach out to the high school and guidance and social workers at the high school to see if we can recruit. We need one more person from the high school. We have one that's still remaining. And then reach out to the university and Middlesex and, you know, try to see if we can recruit from there as well, so.
So Chief, how many are pending now or how many applying out and waiting to be interviewed by either HR or you?
So through Mary Ann Manzi and our Director of Research and Planning, she'll be scheduling the interviews for the two people. And I'm not sure the exact process for the recruitment through HR. I know that people submit, they do submit their applications and information through HR, and then they're filtered to us through the manager's office. Because I believe the ordinance does state that everything, members shall submit their names to the City Manager for consideration. So they go to HR through the manager's office and we conduct the interviews, and then they go back to the manager for approval.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for your response and thank you for the report. And I hope that, you know, HR find a way to really work on this and to try to maybe think ahead how we should recruit members for this committee, because I think it's one of the important committee in term of a relationship between the police department and the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. One thing I'd like to see, maybe we consider, again, since we're at a district format with the council, has anyone considered potentially, because the offices are great, they show up at all the neighborhood meetings and give incident reports and updates on the crime stats? How would if we recruited kind of participation from each district? That way, it's, because every district's going to have different needs and kind of a different relationship with law enforcement. So I think that might be something worth considering.
Manager Golden?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through to the council. Counselor Robinson, that's exactly what Leticia and our office will be doing. Matter of fact, I believe she's at a meeting tonight. And what we're going to try to do under the direction of the HR Director is to ensure that all the residents throughout the neighborhood meetings know, they know exactly what is available, what people can apply for, and what the individual pieces do, whether it be with the police department or on a planning board. Doesn't really, you know, we have, you know, a few openings, but we want to make sure that we're continuing to get this out. So every neighborhood meeting that she does attend, she'll be talking about that and handing out the informational pieces for people to hopefully get even more engaged. Because we're kind of figuring if they're engaged in the local district, maybe they'd be engaged in the city.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else, we'll go to motion B.
Thank you.
Motion Response B, Hadley Lighting. Any comments? I have just one comment. I think, if it's okay with the board, I thank the manager for his response. I'm hoping that we can get an engineering study over there so we can get this moving as fast as possible so that we can get more and more of residents on that field and scheduling much easier. But I thank you again for this response. Motion C, Response, Pawtucket and School Street Smart Signal. Counselor Yem?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, and thank you, Yvani, for a great report. I really appreciate it. This is something that, you know, eventually that the whole country will embrace a smart street light, and I am happy that the university is working on it. I just have a couple of questions. Number one, when do we know that we will receive or not receive the smart grant? That's my first question. The second question, you mentioned that the implementation of this smart traffic light, there's four section in the Dutton Street corridor. Would you explain to which traffic light on Dutton Street that it, that will, you know, receive this smart traffic light? Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Traffic engineer?
If I may, the awards for the smart grants are anticipated this spring, I believe April. So we should, our fingers crossed here then. Then the intersections that were targeted for the static adaptive signal control were Dutton and Market Broadway and Merrimack, and then down to Arcand and Father Morissette.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much again for the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Yem. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to motion Response D, Recycling Trash Bin Replacement. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. First, thank you for this response, I guess, but what I'm seeing in this response is nothing like what I've been told by residents. They refer to people submitting online, so everything's trackable. But I've gotten 10 to 12 different calls of people going in person, and I'm being told that it's a antiquated paper system where some of these reports of broken bins and things are getting lost in the shuffle. So when you get down there, no one knows where your paperwork is in some instances. I have a couple of questions. It's, I'm not sure if, no, so, I mean, some things that I would like to know more about, because again, if we're using an outdated handwritten paper system to track 30,000 households' bins, and sometimes we're finding that the damage is done during the collection process. And people have to sit with a damaged bin. And I've heard instances where they get threatened to be fined as a result of the bin being broken that the collection service broke, which is not fair, in my opinion, at all. Are we doing repairs in-house is another question I would have, as well as how many employees do we have currently in-house working in the solid waste and recycling department that physically are going around repairing these bins if we are doing them in-house? I mean, it's just, if somebody calls and leaves a voicemail of a damaged bin, chances are that person might not be able to report it on the computer or they've already done that. And so what are we doing for these people? Because it's easier for a lot of people to go in person and explain how collection was done that morning, their bin was damaged, and now they're being told that they cannot put their garbage out, so they're going to get fined or whatever. So I think we need to really, I don't know if this should go to a subcommittee for further exploration, because I think there is some updates that need to be done in this. And if any of my colleagues could refer or come up with a subcommittee they think that this would fit to review?
Manager Golden?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through to the council. Counselor, absolutely, if you'd like to send it to a subcommittee, but I'd love to work with you directly on this. The paper system, we did pick up on that. So we're going to be in the process of anyone going into DPW, there'd be an opportunity that people are, you know, probably put into the system right then and there. As far as the repairs, the repairs are happening in-house, they, for everything that we can, we do. And as how many employees, I'd be guessing at this time, but I'd gladly get back to you. If anyone is having an issue, my apologies, the Commissioner, Commissioner St. C has just been detained with some city business, so he had every intention of being here. But as far as the paper system, that is something we will look at, which I can report right back to you and report to all the councilors. And the repairs are being done in-house, and I will get you the employee number if that's okay. If there's anybody else having this problem, or please feel free to get ahold of the Assistant City Manager, myself, and we'll make sure that it's rectified immediately. This should be a fairly simple process.
Thank you. And again, this is, we have people in that department responsible for this, and that's why it's tough to bother upper management with these kind of issues. And when I'm being told that people are going in, and again, their bins are damaged during the collection process from the company that's doing the collection. And now we're responsible for the repairs in that situation? I think we need to take a hard look at this. Thank you.
If no one else has any other questions, I have one that I would like to ask to the manager if no one objects. Mr. Manager, under the contract for solid waste disposal services, it kind of contradicts what we got back in our response. On page 17, it says, "The contractor, superintendent of collections, or its representative shall collect complaints at the office of the Commissioner of Public Works at or beyond, before 11:00 a.m. and again at 2:00 p.m. each day, Monday through Friday. All complaints reported to contractor before 2:00 p.m. shall be investigated, acted upon by the contractor forthwith, and in the event before 5:00 p.m. of the same day." It doesn't seem as though this is happening. And, you know, when we start looking at a lot of the waste complaints that all of us are getting, we get them daily, we send them off, and it seems like we have to wait days, months before we get this stuff back. And it also states in the contract that there would be a registered log of all these complaints. Could you look into this and see if this is being done? Because it doesn't seem fair that we're paying for, again, services that are not actually being held accountable, at least on the end that we're reading in these responses. And that's just, Mr. Manager, if you'd like to respond or if you just would get back to us at a following date with some information on that?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The five pieces that we put forth, I mean, obviously, if the council would like to put it into a subcommittee, absolutely. However, I will get the answers for this. As far as the complaints being electronically filed, the paper system, that's what stuck out to me in this era. And then, of course, the repairs and whatnot, and of course, these complaints, Counselor Getche, Vice Mayor Getche, we will get that worked out as well. So I'd gladly get this done this week and just contact all the councils and let you know what the answers are, if that's appropriate.
Yeah, that's very appropriate. And I just think it's a good information piece for all of us as we try to get answers to a lot of the residents' complaints that some are well before 11 o'clock and we don't see answers by 5:00 p.m. for them at least, and they say it's multiple, multiple days. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. And again, if we're going to be discussing this recycling and the bins and all this, same thing with the downtown, with the complaints of our waste being picked up in hours that is not supposed to be. So I'd like to refer this to the Neighborhood Subcommittee, make a motion on the floor to refer this response to Neighborhood Subcommittee.
Motion by Counselor Robinson to refer this to the Neighborhood Subcommittee, seconded by Counselor Scott. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to go back to the regular to the regular agenda under General Public Hearings 4.1, Order MSBA ARP Feasibility Study 2002, second reading by title, "To Borrow $250,000 For The Purpose Of Paying Cost In Architectural And Engineering Services Related To Various School Improvement Projects, More Fully Described Below." We're going to open that hearing. All those in favor? All those in favor? All those in favor? We're going to close that hearing. Close that hearing. All those in opposition? All those in opposition? All those in opposition? That portion of the meeting is closed. Motion to adopt and refer to the clerk's office for 20 days by Counselor Rourke, seconded by Counselor Janess. Roll call.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Cho? Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Getche?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
10 yeas, 1 absent. 4.2 ordinances, amend fee schedule, weights and measures, second reading by title, "In ordinance amending the Code of Ordnances of the City of Lowell, Massachusetts with respect to Chapter 50 thereof entitled fees by amending certain sections." The hearing is open to those in favor? Those in favor? Those in favor? Seeing none, that portion of the meeting is closed. Motion, I'm sorry. Open that hearing to those in opposition? Those in opposition? Those in opposition? That section of the meeting is closed. Motion to adopt and refer to, I'm sorry, close here. Motion to adopt by Counselor Scott, seconded by Counselor Mercier. Roll call.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Cho? Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Getche?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
10 yeas, 1 absent. Motion E, response. Preparation for Waste Band by Counselor Getche. Any questions? No questions. Okay. We'll move on to motion F. State Cannabis Commission in Social Consumption With Attachments by Counselor Drinkwater, Counselor Robinson. Does anybody want to go? Counselor Robinson?
I'd just like to say thank you for this report, and I'd like to refer this to the Cannabis Subcommittee, please.
Counselor Drinkwater?
That was just a second. Happy to have a meeting on the topic.
Thank you. The motion to accept all the motion responses and place on file by Counselor Janess, seconded by Counselor Drinkwater. 5.2 Communications, City Manager Request Out-of-State Travel Lowell Police Department. Motion to adopt by Counselor Noon, seconded by Counselor Robinson. Roll call.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Cho? Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Getche?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
10 yeas, 1 absent. Mr. Vice Mayor? Counselor Janess?
Thank you. May I make a motion to suspend the rules to take item 10.5 out of order? I understand we have some registered speakers here this evening for that.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Janess to take 10.5 out of order, seconded by Counselor Noon. 10.5, Counselor Janess, Request City Manager Provide Report On Timeline And Process For Organizations Looking To Apply For The ARPA Funding.
Isaac Xavier, 1301 Lawrence Street?
Before we start that section, I just want to just make mention that it's a five-minute process of speaking. And also, we have to stick to what the motion actually outlines, which is the timeline for the organization to apply for the ARPA funds. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor? We need a second on the motion before we...
I thought you had a second by Counselor Noon.
We did, okay. I'm sorry, I missed that.
All right. Hello, my name is Isaac. I'm a project manager at Life Connection Center. I got to know and get connected with Life Connection Center through the church that started the center, and that would be like Mew Church. Maria Spinosa, the pastor senior at the time, was the one to start the center when confronted with the reality our Appleton Street community was living in. We first started providing meals and then expanded in some other directions. I'm the first person that got to be hired by Life Connection Center. Our focus in these almost six years that I'm there has always been to serve the City of Lowell and to do so by loving the very material that built the city, the people. We serve the City of Lowell, helping, loving, and respecting, more specifically, the homeless community by feeding, clothing, making sure everybody's safe, and lately by providing a roof for about 20 people at a time. I'm here today to say thank you for having this cause being discussed in this house in such great length. All the help we get from anyone, including this house, so we could better help our people is more than welcome, even more during just such a time of the year as we are living right now. We appreciate City Councilor Rita Mercier for bringing up emergency ARPA funds a few weeks ago to help us with our recent building needs. And thank you to the City Councilor Wayne Janess for further clarification on the timeline on these funds. The need is great. I'll now pass the mic to my colleague Carl as he have more information about the program we run at the center. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Carl Taditz, 192 Appleton Street?
Good evening. Here primarily to speak on behalf of Life Connection Center from a position of gratitude. Thank you, Counselor Janess and Mercier, for bringing up specifically ARPA funds, the timeline distribution, and for graciously bringing up Life Connection Center. At the center, I wear a lot of hats. My primary role is the shelter manager. As it stands now, we have a robust outreach program. We offer meals and showers to the community Monday through Friday. We have a harm reduction program, safe syringe exchange. We hold regular small groups, including a new lease-on-life group offers an opportunity for folks that are recently housed, many times for the first time in their adult lives, to have some support and some education of what that means. Primarily, my role is working as the manager of the sanctuary, which is a 20-bed homeless shelter. And frankly, I would love to continue the support for the sanctuary. As we discussed here, and I've heard from you folks, there are enough beds for the folks in this community that are unhoused. And I consider myself a bridge builder. I don't know what you need me to do, but I'd be happy to do it. In my opinion, I believe that there is a pathway, a track, a roadway for us to continue shelter operations and whatever else the city deems necessary. I've heard the city might be interested in a day center. We're a very agile agency. There's nothing we can't do. I'm just humbly asking for support, and these were things that we had touched upon, you folks had touched upon in the meeting. So whatever that pathway is to ARPA funds potentially to get our building upgraded, I would graciously appreciate it and just offer another opportunity, a choice for the folks that are unhoused in this city. Listen, I'm not denigrating any of my colleagues or any other agencies. As I said, I'm a bridge builder, but some of our folks are banned from other programs. Some of our folks will not go there for personal reasons. And unfortunately, what they mainly cite is safety. I'm a team player. I want to continue to work with folks. But I'm more than eager to hear what potential pathways or what we can do, you know, in a team sense to possibly help us to continue to operate a shelter operation and to continue to, you know, serve the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Going forward, we're trying to outline a timeframe, and we're just looking at trying to set up the timeframe and stuff that is outlined in the motion, so.
Tommy, Tommy Bucho?
How you doing? I'm... I'd like to thank the city council for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I would like to thank Counselor Rita Mercier for... talking about the homeless community a few weeks ago and potential uses of ARPA to help Life Connections. My name is Thomas Bucho. I would like to thank the city council also for giving me the opportunity to speak about the amazing place called Life Connections. I was, I'm homeless. I am currently in a program. I was once living on the streets with little to no hope in life. Got the opportunity to stay at Life Connections, and I was showed love and was not judged for my past. I was helped with getting things back in my life, like doctors, the proper doctors I need and so on. Most of all, I was showed hope and care. I have almost 10 months clean today. And sorry. Life Connections also showed me there's more to life than how I was living. So, once again, I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on their behalf. Life Connections is an amazing place. They really helped save my life in certain ways, and I am forever grateful for that. Recently, Life Connections had a deal with building issues, and I had to leave along with 20 others that were all getting improper care. And it really affected us, especially me personally. It really hurt to see such a great place non-operable. So, once again, I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. And that's really all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jesus Ruiz? Megan Lee?
Good evening, guys. I just want to start off by saying thank you to Counselor Janess for bringing up the timelines for the ARPA funds. And thank you to Counselor Mercier for talking about the needs of us and the use of the ARPA to help Life Connection Sanctuary. My name is Megan Lee, and this is my boyfriend, Daniel Langone. We are homeless, but we're staying in a program looking for housing. We are here to tell you a little bit about our story. Two years ago in December, started out feeling like it was the worst day of our lives. Me and Dan were in a collapsing tent due to the snow, praying for a miracle. We have never in our lives been homeless. We worked all our lives, had a roof over our heads until we didn't. We had a little mom-and-pop diner in Chumsford for seven years that had to shut down due to COVID. Within those two weeks, our housing was gone. Also to do Dan's mother selling her home and moving it forward. We spent our savings in a hotel until we were forced to encamp and live in. I always remember that day in December when this woman pulled up to the top of the campsite we have never met before asking if we wanted to stay in a hotel. I didn't believe this was serious at first until I realized she was. She said, "Gather everything that is valuable. I do know when you're, well, you guys will be coming back." We spent the entire day picking people up in her vehicle after that. We all went to a hotel. Jamie from Life Connections was our angel that day. This made us believe so much more from direct actions how much God takes care of us This made us believe so much more from direct actions how much God takes care of us through the use of others. Having a roof over our heads and taking care of ourselves, eventually when I was ready, I was offered employment. Later that year, working in the kitchen doing what I love again, I am still an employee at Life Connections. I'm dedicated to help people the way they helped us. Dan was able to get his CDL back because of Life Connections Program, now working at a company and doing what he loves to do and drive. They did not just help with the roof and employment, they're a family and we're a strong one. This place is the heart of downtown. People come from all over, but we're only two stories and many more people that haven't been heard. Personally, this place saved our lives. Thank you for being a community that will never give up and thank you for taking the time to consider the epidemic of homeless plaguing our streets. Thank you again, guys.
Thank you.
Jamie Dillon, 192 Appleton Street.
Hi, thank you very much. Just to reiterate some of my staff and guests that come to Life Connection Center, we're grateful that the timeline and application of ARPA funds are being brought up. We are looking for some clarity. As we mentioned several times, it'll be ready in days, it'll be ready in weeks. So, we're really just looking forward to some very specific responses. Our needs are great and vital. Every single day, we have five to 10 individuals coming to our facility looking for shelter beds. We all have heard a couple of weeks ago, we have some building barriers, some expenses that we need to address. All of the priorities for ARPA, I think four out of five of them, we meet significantly between addressing ongoing issues due to COVID-19, health issues, substance use issues, housing, homelessness. So, we're really looking for more information because we do have urgent needs and we just thank you for listening. Thank you so much.
Thank you. There's no other registered speakers, so we'll turn it over to the Counselor. Counselor Wade Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Through you to the City Manager. Actually, before that, I just want to thank everyone who came out to speak tonight. Was not expecting so many folks, so it's so nice to see folks engaged and coming and sharing their stories with us. So, thank you for being here. But to the City Manager, a few weeks ago, a previous meeting, you did mention that this was coming soon. Hadn't seen anything yet and so just trying to get some clarity because I know that this organization isn't the only one that's reaching out to ask and asking when this funding is going to be available and the application process is going to be open. And the longer we wait to get the funding out, unfortunately, the less effective I feel the funding is going to be where we are dealing with some significant inflation across the country. The money that came from the federal government doesn't buy as much as it did when it first got here. Even with the interest that I understand this funding is earning, it's not outpacing the inflation. So, the faster we can get it in the community and put it to work, the better. That's all. Thank you.
Counselor Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. What we have in the city that is in need of our immediate attention is the homeless crisis. We cannot deny that there are people on the street and I feel guilty many times to be in my warm home with a roof over my head and knowing that there's people living out in tents and you name it and exposed to the elements and here we have an organization that has an area set aside to get people off the street. I would think that it's most critical to provide funding and help them the best that we could. I know that we can't help everybody. I wish that we could, but even if you're getting 20 people off the street, isn't that worth it? 20 less people to die? I don't know. It's very sad. It's sad because at any blink of an eye, that could be us and that's my thoughts. And I am passionate and I am sad about it because sometimes people need direction, they need someone that cares about them. You heard what Tom said, "They cared about me." Maybe he never had that before, but someone cared for him and so I think they took the time to come down here to ask and I know in the Bible it says, "Ask and you shall receive" and they're asking and I hope that we can, in our power, give them something to sustain them and get people off the street. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. Thank the speakers, but I'm just looking for clarification. This motion at the core of it is looking for the timeline and the process because with any asks with the ARPA, because we have it broken down into different baskets, there's going to have to be criteria met, correct? And so, I mean, this is, I think it's a little preemptive, to be honest. I know the need is great and honestly, we've heard from probably two dozen different organizations that have a great need as well. I just think right now with this motion, we need to establish and stay focused. What is the timeline and the process and what are the criteria going to be established so people can start this process? I think we're jumping to step five before we even get to step one. So, I think this is a great motion and I look forward to getting this information out to all the different organizations that have some serious need. Thank you.
Counselor Noon. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I think, you know, Counselor Janess simply asked for the timeline of this and of course, the process and criteria is included. I know that the manager of offices has working on it. I know that a section of it, I know that the DPW directors has met with some of the, all of the council district and at large with regard to the park and recreational space. However, the issue with homelessness and housing has not been so far. So, maybe the managers can report on the timeline on all the, these different segment of this appropriation of this money. Also, I think while, when and you do it, involve Coordinator of Homelessness, Ms. Fitch Patrick. Where is she on this in term of recognizing the lack or the need, recognize the need of this Life Connection Center? What is it? What can we do to help while waiting for the timeline for this, the, you know, the application, the applying for this? Because my understanding is that, you know, yes, on the one hand, you want places for people to stay, but you want a safe place for people to stay. You know, safety is important, not just a place, you know, for people to go, but also that place needs to be safe. So, maybe the Coordinator of Homelessness can help and work with the Life Connection, address some of those, the early issues that I think was discussed the last council meeting. Thank you.
If there's no objections, I'd just like to make a couple of comments from the chair. I want to commend the person in Life Connections because of a person getting a commercial driver's license back. That's one of the hottest things to do in the country right now, federal driver's license and it's amazing and I just want to say that for Life Connections, you did something really unbelievable and good luck. Good luck. So, now we'll go back to the agenda. Six, vote from the manager, 6.1 vote, accept, expend $133,600 from MCC grant. Way full reading and second reading by title. Authorize the city manager to apply for, accept and expend a grant in the amount of $133,600 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts through the Massachusetts Cultural Council for use by the Lowell Cultural Council.
Motion to approve.
Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Just had a quick question. I saw this come up and I reached back through previous agendas trying to find a time when we did this previously because I assume this isn't the first chunk of money to come through, but I couldn't find anything and it seems like this money is coming from the Mass Cultural Council directly to the Lowell Cultural Council and I guess I'm not sure what the City Council's role is in appropriating that funding. It's not city funding from what I can tell. So, I just am trying to get a little clarity on what the ask is and what we're looking to do here. So, I'm not sure. Maybe that's a solicitor question. Thank you.
Through the Vice Mayor, John McKenna Acting First Assistant. This is to accept the grant. So, we're accepting the grant. The money that is going to be spent will go to the Cultural Council and they'll vote and they'll spend it. This is a matter of accepting the money from the state to the city. I didn't see a vote in the past, but this is for the simple act of receiving the grant. Any grant to the city has to be accepted by the council with authority to the city manager to spend it. All the spending goes through the council. This is a specific grant for that purpose. So, when it came up to me for an opinion, it's for the state to grant it, they grant it for a particular purpose. They don't require a vote, but the city itself and under law, accepting grants, this is a grant to accept by the city, the council votes on it and gives authority to the manager act upon it. So, that's why we're voting on it tonight.
Okay, thanks. I just, I guess I missed that it was coming to the city. I thought I just went straight to LCC for them to spend, but if it's coming out, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you very much.
For that particular purpose, so it's going to be spent for the council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adopt by Counselor Drinkwater, seconded by Counselor Noon. Roll call.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Mayor Chow. Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Getchier.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercia.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Rourke.
Yes.
Ten yeas, one absent. Seven ordinance.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules. I believe we have a registered speaker on 10.3.
Motion by Counselor Robinson, seconded by Counselor Noon to take 10.3, oh, 7.3?
10.3.
10.3 out of order. Motion by Counselor Robinson and seconded by Counselor Noon. 10.3, Counselor Yem, Counselor Robinson, request city manager have the appropriate department provide an update regarding joint motion of Counselor Scott, Counselor Yem filed May 24th, 2022 pertaining to Suffolk and Broadway Streets. Detail alternative corrective strategies for this location. Motion seconded by Counselor Mercia. Those two people. Registered Speaker.
Do we have the registered speaker? Well, I'd like to make a motion to allow the speaker on this motion, Maria Claudio, please.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Robinson, seconded by Counselor Noon to let Maria Claudio speak. Maria.
Hi, my name is Maria Claudio. I live an acre next to where we have the problem of car accident between Broadway Street and Suffolk Street. I live in first since my bedroom window is there where the accident have arisen. Last year, we meet call Mr. Poirot and we talk about this, but the accident continued to happen. What we can, what we, sorry, what we want for them, put a stop sign or some time between those three. Many student pastor, they are with is very dangerous and we do not want to, we want to happen and they take action. I have the pictures there, here. I have some more pictures in my bed, in my cell phone. This is very, very, very dangerous, it's about. I needed some time for the stop sign or some time for the Broadway Street and Suffolk Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Counselor Yem.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, and I just want to thank Maria for coming out to speak again on the issue between Broadway and Suffolk Street. Back in early May, it was another big accident and the resident, including Maria and a few residents that live at 192 Suffolk Street, asked me to meet with them and they urged me to request the city to do something because people come from the, people drive really fast and the road curve and they did not, you know, slow down. So, as a result, hitting a parked car and the building as well. And about a week or so ago, there's another accident and the resident reached out to me and Counselor Robinson as well, asking the city to do something. So, I forwarded the Ring Doorbell camera of the accident to the manager who also told me that he passed it on to the traffic as well. So, we are urging the resident on, we have the resident to urge the city to look at this seriously and to come up with a measure to reduce the accident in that intersection. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. As you can see, I guess this has been a repeat trouble spot for vehicle accidents and it's actually hitting the house a few times now. So, again, it might not be a traditional look, bird's eye view for a traffic engineer, but the residents would greatly appreciate any unconventional, unorthodox, thinking outside the box measures that could be taken to kind of mitigate some of these repeat occurrences. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Go back to the agenda. Seven ordinance from the city manager, 7.1 ordinance create position ARPA project construction manager. An ordinance creating one new position of American Rescue Plan Act Project Construction Manager in establishing the salary in the Department of Planning and Development. Motion to refer to a public hearing on January 17th, 2023 at 7:00 PM by Counselor Rourke and seconded by Counselor Scott. 7.2 ordinance amend zoning. An ordinance amending code of the City of Lowell, Massachusetts with respect to Chapter 290, therefore entitled zoning by amending Section 6.1.4 table of the parking requirements in Section 6.1.6, location and layout of parking facilities. Motion to refer to planning board for report into a public hearing on February 14th, 2023 at 7:00 PM by Counselor Janess, seconded by Counselor Leahy.
Mr. Vice Mayor, can I just ask a quick question?
Yep.
So, in the past, when we have done this, the planning board has taken a pass. You know, we ask for a recommendation, sometimes we don't get it. So, what happens if that happens again? Does it just come to us for a public hearing or how do we go forward?
Mr. Solicitor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, so what happens when you have a recommendation, it's requested from a planning board? They make the recommendation, that's fine, use that recommendation, make your vote. If they don't make a recommendation, it's just that, it's a non-recommendation, you still would take your vote.
Thank you.
Eight reports. 8.1 wire inspector, Boston Gas National Grid requests replacement of 2,230 feet of gas main on Wesley Ave, West Albert Street, Walton Street and Preston Street. Motion to accept and adopt accompanying order by Counselor Noon, seconded by Counselor Rourke. Nine petitions. 9.1 claims for property damage. Motion referred to Law Department for report and recommendations by Counselor Noon, seconded by Counselor Janess. Ten city council motions. 10.1, Counselor Getchier. Auditor, clerk, oversight and personnel subcommittee meet to discuss outline and timeline for evaluations of the city manager, auditor and clerk.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Noon. If there's no objections, I'd just like to make a couple of comments from the chair. You know, as we got into the evaluation process, I was unaware of what the timeframe was to do the evaluation, when they're due and I got an evaluation sheet from one of the people that we oversee and I just think that under the qualities, we really don't have, it's not really performance based, it's just, okay, attendance, I'm not sure of, I'm not sure of a lot of things under there and I just think by sending this to a subcommittee, it would give us a better grasp on how we oversee the employees that fall under our purview. That's the intent of the motion.
Just a quick question, Mr. Mayor. So, the evaluations that have been submitted, those have been submitted and is this about going forward in the process down the line?
I haven't submitted mine yet because I don't know when the date was to submit, so I'm not sure if everyone did submit or not, but certainly, yeah, it's going forth. There's no way we could put it together this fast and it's not fair to an employee to do a evaluation based off of performance after the fact. So, yeah.
Makes sense, thank you.
Counselor Mercia.
I do understand where you're coming from. I already submitted my two evaluations, but in the future, that's a good idea because some of those questions, I don't know how to answer them. You're absolutely right. So, you know what I did? I went to the office and I asked the people at work there, "How's the attendance of this person or how's this doing and how's that?" So, they had good things to say, so I went accordingly because I don't work there. I don't know if they're showing up every day, so you're bringing a good point, although I observed what I saw and I think they did a good job. Not 100% because only God is perfect, but that's fine. Thank you.
I read that somewhere before. I did the same thing. I called CFO Baldwin and asked him questions about some of the stuff, but.
But I hear your point. I can understand that.
Does anybody else have anything on that motion? Okay. Motion 10.2, Counselor Scott, request city manager have appropriate department provide a report with the number of neighborhood parking signs that have been issued. Sign fee charges versus actual cost, the yearly decal fee versus actual cost, how they are tracked and billed yearly, the yearly number that they pay, their renewal fee and the total revenue from this program. Seconded by Counselor Mercia. I'm already sweating. Counselor Scott.
I wanted specific items, so. So, the finance subcommittee met and a lot of residents came and they asked us to really take a look at the entire picture of parking. They really don't want their discounts to go away for the parking garages. They asked us to make sure we're looking at everything. So, this was my attempt at bringing one of those items forward possibly for future discussion in the subcommittee. I know that the parking signs cost more than we charge for them and we've mentioned it a few times here on the floor. And also, we've had residents reach out. We had one today to ask about why I'm paying for the decal on the sign when other people are not. A simple walkthrough of the neighborhood, you'll see that people are not renewing their decals. I don't know if we send a bill out every year if that can be done. So, those were the items that I'm looking for. Thank you.
Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Counselor Scott covered most of what I was going to say, which was just to mention the email that we all got about neighbors who don't pay and I was going to ask if the maker of the motion would be amenable to also including a request for a report on what happens when someone has a sign and doesn't renew their decal. Do we do anything? Do we know that or does it just disappear? So, that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you. 10.4, Counselor Leahy, request city manager have Mass DOT provide report regarding repairs to Andover Street, seconded by Counselor Mercia. Counselor Leahy, I love the length of your motion.
Thank you. Basically, a motion speaks for itself, but in the report, if we could just get more information on what could be done to repair the street and it does seem like some of the newer panels over the last 10 or 15 years seem to be the ones that are deteriorating faster than the older panels. So, we get some input on that too. Thank you.
Counselor Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. This is a very good question because it's in front of my face all the time when I come out onto Andover Street and it's very, you know, lumpy and it's not an even road. It's like frost heaves or whatever. When you're coming into Tewksbury on 133, it seems to stop at the lower line and everything in Tewksbury is perfect, but once you get over the line into Lowell, there's ruts and bumps. And the reason that I'm glad that Counselor Leahy made this motion is because it never fails. Whenever I go to Walgreens, the drugstore, the pharmacy out there, or I go to the strip mall, there's always someone that runs into me and says, "What's wrong with the street right here? Why is Lowell like this, but Tewksbury is nice?" So, yeah, it's an appropriate motion. Are we going to fix that or is that going to stay like that? I mean, we did the sidewalks in that area, we took the trees down and replaced the trees and we left the street like that? I mean, there's lights there now in the Tewksbury side. That's wonderful. You can. You can get out of the pharmacy. You can move around. It's fair. But the street is another thing to be reckoned with. And I don't have an answer for them. I don't know what to tell them, but they're absolutely right, no matter where I go down there. I'm getting to the point where I don't want to get my medicine over there anymore. There's always someone that has a complaint. But I don't know what we're going to do, but I don't know, fill the holes or I don't know what to do. I don't have an answer for them. Thank you.
Okay. 10.6, Mayor Chow. Request city manager create a link on the city's webpage to publish all officially established sister city partnerships with the city of Lowell, including sister city's municipal website. Seconded by Councilor Scott. Motion speaks for itself. Mayor Chow sent a message to me. 10.7, Mayor Chow. Request city manager have the proper department create usage plan and cleanup plan of South Common to enhance neighborhood vitality and public open space activities. Seconded. Seconded by Councilor Noon. Motion speaks for itself. Oh, Council Mercier.
Yes, it does speak for itself, but let me tell you, that is a good motion. But I'm going to tell you, we have a DPW crew that goes there every single Friday under the leadership of Shannon Cohen. They clean the place up immaculately. It's magnificent. And then two days later, it's back to being what it is. I mean, we're using a lot of city people, city hours to clean the South Common to have it destroyed again. I'm sorry to say it, but I see it every day because I'm there. So I don't know how you're going to solve this, but I know the city is working very diligently hard. I see it. I see it. Every Friday.
We're going to get more people to get CDL licenses.
Yeah, maybe so, yeah. We need more beds to put people in so they can use a basket instead of the South Common as a trash bed. But that's my opinion.
Okay. 11 announcements. Any announcements, Mr. Manager?
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Council Yem.
Yes.
Council Yem.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Today, January 3, is the first anniversary of this council that's sworn in. It's a historical moment because we have a council of representing district that never was there before. And I'm so honored and privileged to serve alongside with my distinguished colleagues, Mr. Mayor Sokari Chow and then city manager and his team. And I'm so humbled by the love and support I receive from my distinguished colleagues and also from the residents of District 7 and from the entire city. I look forward for many more years of service to our cities and the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Yem. Any more announcements? Council Robinson.
Thank you. Something came across today from a case, and I've been asked this quite a bit. And this is something I think residents should be looking forward to. I'm sure you'll be seeing it quite a bit on social media. Case is putting together a night for Lowell 2023 Festival Producers Information Night. So anybody that's been asking or curious about putting together events, festivals, anything out in the community utilizing public space or whatever it may be, Case is hosting an informational session, and that's going to be held Tuesday, January 17 at 6:00 PM in the mayor's reception room. And they're actually going to go through the permitting process, cross promotional opportunities, availability of ARPA funding for some of these kind of community-based projects. And they're looking to fill up the calendar that night as well, if you have something that fits the criteria. So again, check the city Lowell's website. I'm sure a lot of my colleagues will be sharing this information. A lot of people have been asking, what's the permitting process to do events, special events in the city? And luckily, we have a great group of people in case and they're going to provide that information to the residents. So thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn by Councilor Drinkwater, seconded by Councilor Janess.
I think Councilor Gitcher needs a citation for next week.